Alrighty. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. McKee here, Lanterman here.
Here.
Friedrich?
Here.
Uh, Varan Camp?
Here.
And Nichols?
Also here.
Alright. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda approval. I know we had a handful of modifications, small tweaks, that were sent out.
No- nothing since the last amendment until Tuesday.
Uh, so just minor updates to a few items that we was six P, six U, eight A, and twelve A. Council wanted, Mark, you wanted to add the discussion topic at nine B?
Yes, please.
And anything else from council or staff?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. Alright, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Hold second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now on to presentations. We have one, which is a ten-year service award for Pete Eckenberg.
Hi, yes, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, we are grateful to celebrate a decade with Sergeant Pete Eckenberg. He joined the department on August tenth, two thousand and fifteen. The department has changed a lot in that time. And by the photo, you can see that Pete has two. Uh, but what hasn't changed is Sergeant Eckenberg's smile, uh, which, uh, e- even just today, staff was reading something, and Sergeant Eckenberg is regularly called out for the way that he connects with people in the community. He is the face of the city to so many folks, and that it's a welcome face in time of crisis and in time of calm. And so we're thankful to have Sergeant Eckenberg here, uh, for the last decade and hope we get another decade from him.
Although, as Jay and I found out, twenty fifteen is kind of sad, depressing, there's not a lot of great stuff. We determined that the best thing that happened in twenty fifteen is you started working here. But other things that happened in twenty fifteen, uh, The Force Awakens was the highest grossing movie that year, making, uh, two point seven billion worldwide. Other top grossing films are Jurassic World, Furious Seven, and Avengers: Age of Ultron. Top charting song was Uptown Funk. Your favorite. And in Minnesota sports, it was rough. Uh, the Vikings had a good year and then lost ten to nine with Blair Walsh, missed the kick in Seattle, uh, in the postseason. The Twins and Wild were average to below average. One got eliminated by the eventual champion Blackhawks, and one, uh, didn't make the playoffs. And the other one, things were hopefully looking up the Timberwolves. Flip Saunders came back, uh, Kevin Garnett came back. We traded Kevin Love and got two number one overall picks. Um, and then Flip Saunders got cancer unfortunately and had to take leave of absence. And they had a league where sixteen and sixty-six record. Then they got fifteenth overall, or the, the twenty fifteen first overall pick, making them the first team to have three consecutive first overall picks on their roster. And won only two or three times, if they had back-to-back groupies of the year on their roster, but they still finished twenty-nine and fifty-three, uh, which was one of the worst records in the industry. That's about it. Well, thanks for that.
Cheer us up, Pete.
Thank you.
Thank you, sweetie.
You're better than Kevin Garnett.
Yeah.
Wait, before you leave, you have the floor. Any thoughts? Nuggets of wisdom? No, thank you very much for the, the, uh, past ten years. I can't promise another ten, but, uh, maybe nine. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
Alrighty, and we will move on to open forum, uh, for anyone that wants to speak on items that are not on today's agenda. And Jay, come on, go through that.
Yes, uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, anyone who would like to come and speak on something that's not on today's agenda, please, uh, step up to the microphone. I have two comment cards, uh, when I call your name, and then speak to the council. Council, uh, will not at that time, uh, provide any specific guidance. Uh, they're going to listen and then, uh, potentially consider future actions. Uh, so if there's anything not on the agenda, someone would like to come and discuss, again, I have two comment cards. The first is Mr. Alan Horn. I believe I said that. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
My name is Alan Horn. I live at, uh, one zero zero seventeen Jack Ryan Lane. I moved here recently from, uh, my home near Clearwater, and it's really been an amazing journey. I've been amazed that I would move into a house that, uh, had air conditioning that hadn't been wired. That I would move into a house where the windows, many of the windows are not square. Into a house that had mud cake on the cement walls in the storage room. Run into neighbors where they, uh, had, uh, faulty, uh, electrical box, where they had, uh, faulty denting into the attic. And, uh, another one, uh, who actually shared it this evening, uh, had a missing, uh, H-PAC dent into its foot in. So I've been amazed about all of those things, but I've also been amazed by the fact that when the final grading was done, that the, in the, the company doing the final grading was burying, uh, construction debris. When the sod was put in and they were leveling out, uh, the ground, uh, they were tossing construction debris into the buffer zone, into the wooded margin of the buffer zone. Now, as I look at those things that I was amazed about, something else that I was really amazed about is that spokespeople or the developer, uh, had told us that the footbridge and the park, that the city of Corcoran, uh, had been looking at building this for years and just it hadn't gotten around to it. We did find out, however, that that was disingenuous, that that was really not the case, that it was the developer's responsibility to do this. Now, you probably would not be amazed, but that developer is holding. Now, some of these are customer service issues, I recognize that. But I'm thinking, from a city's perspective, what could you do? And I have really a, a few thoughts of that. One is, I think, as you look at issuing building permits, perhaps there's more pressure that you could put on the developer. I think there could be enhanced or more aggressive inspection of homes in that development. And perhaps there could be some other regulations or ordinances that could help make some of these customer service issues less of a problem for those of us who are really quite powerless as we try to address things.
Hi, quick question. Do you have anything in writing from Polte agreeing to do some of these improvements or some of this work that you now claim they haven't done? Do you have anything in writing from them?
For the, for the footbridge and the park?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I don't have anything in writing, but the salesperson told us and a number of other people that I've talked to in our neighborhood, they were told the same thing. And the blame was placed on the city. And I, you know, it'd be great from our perspective if the city built this, but, you know, I recognize the city is representing eight thousand other people, they're not just representing Elvenham. And that I would imagine what the city does is approve plans. They don't fund plans like this.
Are you aware of any of your neighbors who still don't have sod that, that's been laid?
Actually, all the sod was laid, you know, last week.
Okay.
And some of those people had been waiting more than a year to get sod.
So aside from sod and, and, and the bridge and the park, are there, are there specific work items that were expected to be completed by Polte that have not been completed as of today?
You mean in general and in private?
Yeah, like, like sod that's now been corrected.
No, I think that, uh, my sense is that once the city, uh, passed a new rule or ordinance requiring that, uh, Polte putting in sod, I don't know what it was, within sixty days or something of closing, uh, that they have been a lot more responsive when it comes to sodding. Because again, like I said, there were individuals, so we closed an iron house in March, uh, but there were people across the coast that, who closed, uh, over a year ago and had not gotten sod. And of course, their money was sitting in Espo.
But that's been corrected as of today, right?
It has now been corrected.
Okay.
Again, I don't know this for certain, and I hate to speculate, but I think the action taken by the city was very helpful in kind of forcing that issue.
Well, what I would urge you to do, sir, is if there are specific items that you write them down and bring them to a future, um, council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're happy to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for staff's notice, uh, I have heard similar stories about non-Corcoran developments from Lennar, where there are widespread neighborhood issues with certain, like, windows leaking, things like that. It would probably be helpful to make sure that the inspectors are abreast of issues that we're hearing from our residents on, so that they can look for those specific things as they're conducting their work.
Yes, sir. I, I did want to comment on one thing that came up, just for the awareness of the public and just to remind the council. Um, when I first came on board, uh, the, the bridge, the, the boardwalk, but I called it a bridge. Uh, for your benefit, I, I, I was the Parks and Recreation Director in Shakopee when I saw the, the plans that had been introduced at that time. They, they were designed by need because there was supposed to be a water tower in that park. And in order to service that water tower, that bridge needed to have a certain capacity in order for them to maintain the water tower. When the water tower moved, uh, to the Hope Development Site, uh, it was no longer necessary to have it built to those standards. And so that was part of the delay, is it was over-engineered for what the present need was, and that took a little while to work that out. So that, that's part of the delay with that. And then the other one, if you recall, I think it was the last council meeting, Steve, if you can confirm that, or it was the one before that, in which we talked about the final amenity decision regarding that. And so, uh, with those decisions in place, we, we should see that project moving forward here momentarily. So, uh, just an update on the boardwalk. I believe we've hit the things that are necessary in order to progress with that. Uh, next, on the park itself, I did want to correct, actually, the city does have a responsibility for developing that park, and will be moving forward, uh, to explore that based upon guidance from council in future conversations. So right now, uh, Heritage Park is the focus for development, and as part of the twenty twenty-six budget, we'll be discussing, uh, what council would like, uh, staff to focus on for development, because we have competing demands, limited resources. And so, uh, that park will be developed, but will the master planning occur in twenty twenty-six or in future years? That's to be determined in, in future discussions before council. But, but I did want to clarify that the park development is a city responsibility.
Could I add just one thing, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Night two night was a great opportunity just to listen to some of the concerns of our residents. And there was another concern with the Bellwether Park in that the developer was dumping dirt into where the park would be. And so I guess I was going to ask a question, if we already own that park area, can the developer do that?
So my understanding is through collaboration, yes, because the alternative, they, they do have to have someplace to put those materials. And, and I'd actually talked with some other of you council members about this. Uh, as, as you have those materials, that seems a much favorable temporary solution than in the lot that's right next to somebody's house, to have a twenty-foot pile of dirt, especially as they're moving in and out. So while it might not be attractive, it's necessary in the construction process to put those materials somewhere. And that seems to be the, the most reasonable location, uh, in terms of how you're moving them out. The fact that it's temporary, they're not going to be there permanently, uh, and as a temporary location, rather than adjacent to some of our, our new residents' homes, uh, I, I think you might find that preferable than a thirty-foot active, uh, pile of dirt next to the house.
I would add that there are houses right next to the park, though, that it is affecting. So I guess it's whether you affect the people next to the park or other people. But I think it's been quite some time since they've been experiencing that, like, at least a year, with, with the dumping of the dirt. And it was pretty high when I drove by. It was like, probably taller than me if I were standing on the road, flat footed.
In fact, I think it's referred to as Mount Bellwether. And I, I, I didn't think that was funny. You know, that's not right, and it should be addressed.
Any comments, Steve, on that? Did I speak correctly on that was identified as the right spot, uh, for temporary use?
Yep.
How do we identify a spot for that? Like, what is the parameters of, like, this was going to be the spot where you can do this?
Typically, it has to do with just, like Jay, because it's a static spot, so it's there and it kind of sits. And so typically, when a building happens, we try to identify a general area, so we're not constantly moving it to their temporary never crossing curves. If it's moving, it's damaging the structures. So having one location where we can keep it is usually preferred, understanding what you're talking about. There are people that have the effect, so it's not perfect. Somebody, but try to also keep in mind for infrastructure and those other things that play with it.
Because I would say that there are, there's construction debris that ends up in those dirt piles. And I would say that if we have a park there, that's probably not, unless they're moving the dirt back out, so it becomes like flat dirt again, or they're bringing in fill that's clean.
Yeah, typically, it's just for home construction. It's temporary, and so they do have to eat that grading plan. So anything that stays there, we do inspect and make sure it's clean.
Okay.
Most are temporary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and then we did have one other card, uh, so Laura Horn.
So good.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Laura Horn, one zero zero one seven Jack Ryan Lane. And, um, of course, I support, I'll have to say, about the, um, issues, especially the lack of respect for the environment with all the construction that gets buried, uh, around the, it's just outrageous. And then into the wetland as far as I'm concerned. I'd like to just add that, uh, disinformation is probably the biggest issue right now in our community. People think that it's the city's responsibility to do the bridge as well as the park, which turns out it's true, but other people say, no, it's, uh, Polte who's responsible. And, um, when people talk about it, they're angry. And it isn't probably because they're getting the right information and they don't like what they're hearing. It's the disinformation that we get. And so somehow, if the city could be, uh, helpful, if you were to provide the correct information to maybe the HOA to present this narrative in our newsletter, that would be very beneficial because it's just, uh, destructive. Now, I mentioned that we learned about the bridge being built, uh, a year ago. And the person who posed that was the salesperson, and she was very strong. She goes, "Well, the city was supposed to do it last year, but they didn't get around to it. And this year, they promised to do it in August." And August seems to be the favorite month, uh, because that's what other people have said, that, "Well, the city's going to do it in August," and it comes out there pretty clear for I don't know how long. And so I just think that hearing you, Jay, talk about, uh, you know, who's responsible for what, and particularly the city, that our last, um, get-together, and you were there, Mark, right?
Yes.
And people are so upset about that mound of dirt. And, um, and they don't know, um, you know, the particulars, how necessary sometimes it is just to have one site to, you know, put that excess dirt someplace. But, uh, I think that, um, more consideration could be given to finding a location that doesn't affect so many people in a neighborhood. But I know the difficulty of it, and I think that, um, providing the HOA with information that is factual and that is sympathetic to the, uh, community members about how you really do try to make sure that you're part of the equation in all of this is, um, in part justified. And so my, um, focus today is just to share with you that I think disinformation is wrong. I mean, it's bad, and it's making people angry, and by studying the facts and listening to people, as Mark did, uh, at our get-together, uh, that I think that people, people's tempers will go down and be more understanding. Thank you.
Quick question. Are, are you on the HOA?
No, I'm not.
Do you know, do you have any of the contacts?
Yes, I do.
If you could get that, um, to staff, that would be great, because I think-
And the staff is, alright.
Oh, Jay.
Jay, alright, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. As, as you go on out, uh, there's some business cards that are right on the wall. My name's on one. If you want to grab that, you can email me, uh, that information. That's probably the easiest way for you to share that.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, as I, I visited, uh, four different parties on night two night, a lot of what I told people was I would rather stop, I'll just say it, the gossip. And if you have questions on things in our city, contact the city. If you call the city number, ask for the operator, anything, they will get you in touch with somebody that absolutely knows the answer.
What a great idea.
I, I, I just-
Something else that I would like to see in this thing, yeah.
You're, you're welcome to share my information with anyone. Uh, coun- council will tell you, and those here who know it, I'm happy to talk with anybody.
For sure.
Just be ready, it'll be forty-five minutes or so, so it, it will be a long conference.
The other thing too, another- Our cards are out there as well.
Another resource, and I mentioned it a little while ago, another resource for folks, and I know everybody gets it. Everybody that has an address in this town gets our newsletter. And I think our last newsletter was eighteen or twenty pages long. I had a number of people just throw it out, think it's propaganda. That is the heartbeat of our city, and it's been one piece of communication that's very good. And I think there was even the conversation in there, or a narrative in there, about the bridge in Bellwether. Was it this year, or this, or was it the summer one, or the-
Those are on the city website as well.
Those are on the city website too, but all the people listening, did you call City Hall? Ask them that. And then, there, we've got a very receptive administration. They'll, they'll get you the answer.
Or all of our numbers or emails are on our cards right outside there, right by where-
And on the website with their handsome pictures.
Feel free to call us as well.
Pictures. Might not be handsome.
Yeah, pictures. Alrighty.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else for open forum? Okay, if not, then we will go ahead. Consent agenda consists of six A through six R. Does anyone want to pull anything? Nope. Then I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items six A through six R.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, sorry. I will second.
Perfect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. That's like a whole page. Okay. On to planning business. We just have the one item. It's the upward acres lotline adjustment and drainage and utility easement vacation. And I think Natalie?
This is the bad puck.
Oh.
It was green earlier. It doesn't work. It's not showing up on there.
Is your link working?
There it goes. I think she can melt the slides too. Oh, yeah, I don't remember.
Alright, let's turn that. Oh, why is it doing that? Okay, no one look at my notes, right?
Just hit the swap presenter.
Okay, so upward, uh, the first item tonight is a public-
You were almost there. Just hit display settings and swap.
It won't let me, it's gray.
Oh, I've never seen that before.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, thank you, I appreciate it though. Uh, okay, so upward, upward acres tonight is going, we're just looking at a lotline adjustment between two lots, and it is a public hearing for an easement vacation. Uh, the applicant is Sky's Limit LLC. They are the developer and builder for upward acres. And the location is these two highlighted lots here, uh, ninety-one fifty-five and ninety-two oh five under Hill Lane. A final plat for upward acres was approved in September twenty twenty-four. It was a six residential lot subdivision located on County Road ten and what is now under Hill Lane. It is just west of Bechtold Road. Uh, and so the lotline adjustment is to provide that northern lot with a, just a little bit more acreage, about a half acre. And then as part of that, the previously established, established perimeter drainage and utility easements that were along the shared lot boundary must now be vacated and replaced based on the new lotline. So this is just the, the dash line is the old lotline, and the solid line is the new lotline. So you see, we're just, we're going to move that just, just a hair so that they can get about a half acre more of land. And the proposed, uh, the other thing I want to add is typically, lotline adjustments that meet all of our standards and don't require variance is something that I can just approve administratively. The reason why you're seeing this in front of you tonight is because of the public hearing component for the easement vacation. Our code says that when that is required, it does have to go to council for approval. So, um, it's typically something that you wouldn't see. But, uh, I did look through everything, and I'm confident that the lotline adjustment complies with all of our subdivision and zoning district standards for the rural residential. Uh, both lots exceed our minimum dimensional requirements. The request does not create a conflict with access or the well or septic locations for either property. If anything, it improves one of the septic locations for the northern parcel, ninety-two oh five. And, uh, really, the only change that I saw is one additional wetland buffer monument will be required where the new lotline crosses a wetland buffer, so I highlighted that here in this little red square. So really, fairly minor, and something that's handled in the resolution for the lotline adjustment. Uh, and then for the actual public hearing, uh, the final plat is what officially established the perimeter drainage and utility easements for these lots. So there is an area now, this top picture, sorry, it's tiny, but this top picture is the area that will now be vacated. And then we will be establishing, this bottom picture shows where we'll be establishing some new drainage and utility easements to replace it. The city engineer did review and confirm there are no concerns with vacating these easements. So for the recommendation, we do need to open the public hearing for the easement vacation, and then staff recommends approval of the resolution for the lotline adjustment. And then there's a separate resolution approving the drainage and utility easement vacation. And the applicant is here as well for any questions.
Should we start with public hearing? Go ahead and open the public hearing if anyone would like to speak on this item. Looks like we're good. Uh, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Very second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then on to the item itself. Any questions for staff or the applicant?
I assume there aren't actually any utilities in the old easement?
Yeah, nothing, um, nothing of concern. I don't believe they're, I think that they were more drainage, really more drainage. I don't, but you could tell me if there's anything else.
Very good.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, resolution two zero two five dash six three.
Wait.
Um- They are eighty-one and eighty-two.
Eighty-one and eighty-two.
Eighty-one and eighty-two. What you got there?
I'm freaking out.
Well, you know what? I'll make the same motion for that one.
Eighty-one and eighty-two?
Alright.
I'll second. Jeremy's second. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
Enjoy your new life.
Thank you.
Onto eight, uh, which is unfinished business. We have eight A, is I believe, is the only one. Let me get back to my highlight slate here. No, we have two. Uh, first one is eight A assessment hearing for the Chisholm Trail Improvement Project.
Uh, so, um, yeah, see you when I'm up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight we have the assessment hearing for the Chisholm Trail Improvement Project. So on the consent, we actually approved the construction of the project. And so this is just to review and approve the assessment role. So the assessments were done in accordance with the City of Corcoran's assessment policy, where we actually get appraisals on the proper, on the properties that evaluate what is the, um, that value that's, and the value of improvement or the value to the property. And then our assessment policy is ninety percent of the low end. Um, because this neighborhood was due for an overlay credit that was applied to this project on the same methodology. And so the assessment amount for the road grave project would have been nine thousand dollars with a credit of forty-five hundred dollars. And so the assessments are calculated equally across all eighteen affected properties at forty-five hundred dollars per property. And so tonight, tonight's the assessment hearing where they've been sent, uh, letters, and it's been posted in the paper noticing these assessments and mounts. So they can come, uh, and, um, it's an open hearing where they could speak to those assessment mounts. And then after the meeting, you would close it, and then either choose to, um, take action on any of the, you know, appeals or accept the assessment role as provided.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions? I'll go ahead and open the, uh, assessment hearing. Anyone would like to speak? If not, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Onto the item itself, uh, with no feedback. Does anyone have any other questions or concerns with it, or someone want to make a motion?
Just real quick.
Yeah.
We had folks from that neighborhood talking about the traffic surveys, all of the stuff that was going on. Did we get with all of those folks and understand what was wrong or what happened?
So the only concern that came after, if you recall that, was, uh, some, some proactive contractors got in and were doing locates on property without communicating to them. Uh, and once they understood that, they, they knew it was coming. They were just surprised about the timing of it.
So are we?
Yeah. But, but if, if you recall, uh, everyone was in favor of it. They thought it was long overdue. And in fa- and in fact, rather than the overlay, they were, they were very happy with this proposed solution.
So what can we do to prevent that from happening again in another neighborhood? I mean, I-
That was, that was a me issue. So what it was, is this project, frankly, we just had a tighter timeline. And so when we called in utility locates, we have a window where we have to call them in and come. So we happened to just call them in the day before, and they typically aren't that on top of it.
They jumped right on it, didn't they?
And so we tried being a little, and so, you know, typically going forwards, the project is approved. We call them in and kind of go through that process. And so we just know if we're doing that to just help inform people a little better, so.
So then my other question was, there was a one neighbor that had folks walking through her backyard and such.
Those are the, so those are the small utility companies, which aren't us. We call them in, and they have a legal responsibility to locate them. What I suspect, I hope sometimes they may be tying onto a gas meter or an electric, because they do locate the private services themselves. So we don't have control over them, so we can't necessarily prevent that. But some, that's just part of the process.
It's like bright hand up and sending them a, a meter reader into my backyard and just showing up.
They might just have to tie onto that utility to collect it. So we can do it. We can restrict the limits to only our project, but sometimes unfortunately, if they have to-
Understood.
Connect to that utility, we don't have that control.
Thank you, Steve, very much.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty.
I'll second.
Alrighty, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's your man. Time for you to act.
Nine, uh, are, are we at nine?
We're on to the mural.
We're on to the mural first.
I don't think you said, you made the motion. I assumed you said there an aye on the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Perfect.
Yes.
Just wanted to double check.
Thank you.
Um, on to eight B, the Domino's mural discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, back again to talk about the Domino's mural. Um, just a quick recap. Part of the variance approval from, uh, the Domino's project back in, uh, twenty twenty-four included a community engagement effort to, um, come up with a design for the mural over, um, the vinyl cooler on the backside of, of the Domino's site. Um, so through this engagement process, uh, we had kind of two phases of the engagement process. One was coming up with the, uh, the, I guess, the-
Themes. Yeah, were a few themes?
Theme, yeah, theme, sorry. Yeah, the theme, lots of words, theme for the, um, for the mural, for the contest, for the design contest. Um, and we had this online survey that was, um, printed out and, um, with QR codes around the city. And we got thirty-three responses to that, and we were able to generate, um, generate the prompt for the design portion of the contest, um, in late April of twenty twenty-five this year. Um, and then in May, we, um, opened the design contest with that prompt and had that contest open for a little bit over a month. Uh, and unfortunately, um, we did not get any respondents to it. So, um, we don't have any designs to, um, to select from, from the community at this point in time. Um, so we're just looking for some direction from council of where you would like us to, you know, proceed forward with this mural project. Um, we have, um, the opportunity to maybe reopen the design contest now that the school year is starting back up again and re, um, you know, res- resubmit these to, um, teachers around the school districts. Um, we could just defer to some designs that are created by, um, a professional designer, uh, from the applicant's team. Um, staff has generated some designs that are included in your packet. If you would like to choose from those, or we're open to other suggestions. Okay?
I had a suggestion. Um, so we, we have these nice photos that were submitted by residents and voted on by residents. We could use that as the public input, and perhaps we could take those images and use them as the basis for something that could be scaled up. So you, you could use a AI agent to take one of them, say the number one, and convert it into a artistic style, uh, of the appropriate resolution and size to be put in the wrap. Uh, I think these are just as good as the ones that we saw in, um, the staff report. I like that there has already been some public feedback on them, and it would be less effort than trying to solicit a bunch of art that we may or may not think is better.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I add to that too?
Sure.
Um, I love that idea, because I love photography. Um, I love that we have a photography contest going now. I think it's fantastic, and I hope we continue to get good participation. Um, I, I would like to bring up again, uh, I do have a person that works at the Rockford High School that is an art teacher. And we started initially having discussions with her about making it into an art project with her, with her high school students. Um, the turnaround time was too quick, because we were thinking we needed to have it done before summer. So, uh, she was told that it wouldn't really work out, because it was the end of the school year. But since it's now extending into the school year, I think that might be a good opportunity to have some Rockford students participate in an idea that I think would be phenomenal to have some really cool artwork on that as a mural next to the Domino's. So I'd like to review that again, too.
Do we have a date that we need to get moving on?
It's wide open. The only challenge is, you know, we're, we're missing out on the opportunity and delaying it. That's, that's it. Uh, the, the other option is if we don't do anything. I mean, it was there. Uh, but if you've seen it, we haven't had anybody. One of the concerns was how did we, uh, make this eyesore look better? And we haven't had any complaints about it. Uh, so this is an opportunity to, to do something positive, but there isn't a timeline tied to it.
Well, how about this? Do you want to reengage with a friend, a teacher? See what, if, if they for sure could do something, what that timeline would be? And if that, bring that back to council, if that doesn't work, or the timeline, uh, is, you know, wouldn't work for them, we could look at doing one of Jeremy's ideas, uh, scaling that up. One of the photos to scale up to be a wrap. And we could always look at doing something with the school. I think they last a couple of years, so we could look at the next time around doing something with the school. If council's-
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to put a timeline on it. That it would be nice if we could get something by end of December. School year starts early September. Did I say December? By, by September, end of September. Um, the staff renditions are wonderful. These photos are obviously great with me disagreeing on the, on the placement of everything, just because the one in the middle was a fond person of mine. Um, but they were beautiful. They were great. They are great. Um, all the pictures that were submitted were awesome. And, uh, it's, it's, it's cool how this happened.
That we might want to, if we did go that route, might want to reach out to the property owners. Obviously, there's one that's okay, I think.
We can, if we, if we defer to our, our attorney type deal, submitting something like this is-
Do we have the rights?
They waive it. Yeah, we-
They waive their rights. We can't use their name and stuff in public. Am I right about that?
Yeah, Jeremy, so you can guess, uh-
Okay. Okay, so, uh, again, I, if there's any problem, I know the one in the middle would be, it doesn't give enough away, but, uh, no, I, I think, I love all of the staff ones. Goodness gracious, you guys. Great job.
Yeah.
Submit those to the art director over there in, in Rockford and see if they can do a rendition of one of those and-
Yeah.
But I, I like it sooner than later. It's, it's been sitting there.
Inspiration. Yeah, I would say I would want to put parameters about what they can and can't do, because if it's, if it's a school project-
Yeah, it, 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 wide open.
Okay.
But here's some things to get them going. I mean-
Yeah.
Maybe send them the pictures and the renderings.
Yeah.
See what they think in terms of the timeline.
And then if that doesn't work, we shift to the picture.
We give Jeremy rattle cans, and he's out there for forty minutes, and he can do whatever he wants.
Corcoran Bank seat, right there.
Is it, is it more specific to wanting like a natural landscape? Or are we looking for like artwork of like landscapes? Or do we have like a general idea of what we want on that mural?
The themes identified with the community survey were more natural, more rural themes, so, um, yeah. I think more aligned with what some of these photographs are.
Natural, rural, ag, I think those three, kind of.
Well, I, I guess what I would say, we have a lot of good options here tonight. Why are we waiting to make a decision? Why not just pick one of the, one of the options that we have in front of us and just go with it?
So the advantage to that from staff is, is we have spent a, a large amount of time-
Yeah.
Uh, for staff time on this small mural at the Domino's. So, so it, there, there is an advantage. And then to the mayor's point, there's another opportunity, uh, when it comes time to replace it, to consider, uh, if we want to do an alternative. But I do think that there's benefit to having closure on it with other competing demands.
I agree.
Uh, I do think it's a missed opportunity, though. Uh, I, I want to acknowledge that of, of, how cool would it be to be the kid in town that had the mural there?
Our community more too. We aren't just limiting it to what we have. We're expanding it beyond just the small group of people that submitted pictures. That's my opinion. I feel like it would be-
There was an original communication for a month, Dwight said, then we got no submit-
Right, but that's-
No submissions at all.
Saying though, if you pulled in students that have an interest in creating something-
I, I agree, but again, we, we had it out for a month. We had this out for how long?
A month.
Yeah, a little more.
And got twenty some picks, fifteen some picks.
How about this, Michelle? Could by our next meeting, would you be able to talk to her and try to get a timeline?
Meeting her for breakfast this weekend.
So how about that? If she brings that back, and if the timeline doesn't work?
Well, again, we're just kicking it down the road. Why not just make a decision right now? We, they, we've already heard that staff has put a lot of time into this. And I guess what I would propose, you know, let's have first place and second place. Let's have council vote if they prefer the, the one on the left and the one in the middle, and just pick one and go.
Of pictures?
Yeah.
Okay, um-
You know, we have-
Do we want pictures or do we want artwork, though?
Well, you would generate artwork using the pictures, because they're not enough resolution to print that big. They have to be upscaled, but there's tools that can do that.
We may also want to put something, not necessarily the logo, but some kind of Corcoran font too. We don't have to, but, uh, I think the previous, the versions of vinyl have been in other communities that typically says the community name too. As part of the identity, we might want to add a little bit-
So that would mean more staff work then?
Not really. I don't think so. I think we're talking about, um, compared to what we've already done. I don't think that that would take a lot. I'm just saying that, that would, that would be one option, um, but whatever direction is, we will do.
So we're gonna have two, two routes I feel like the people feel strongly about, so we're gonna decide one.
I, I agree with Mark. I, I want it done sooner than later. And we do have that, the next rendition would be, I would love to have a kid have responded with something very creative and stuff. But we are monkeying around with something that should have been done by now.
We haven't received any complaints, so I don't understand what the hurry is.
I'm, I'm not hurrying. I'm just, I don't want to waste any more time.
We, we just need closure and time to move on. You know, I just-
But if there's no complaints about it, I don't understand what the hurry is.
Well, then why are we doing it at all if there's no complaint?
Well, that's a good point, too. I just thought we were trying to be the sound.
If we're gonna do something, we should just make up our minds and do it.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion or just direction?
Uh, probably a motion.
Okay. So I'll suggest, based on the aspect ratio being more similar to the refrigerator, that number one is probably gonna be better.
I would agree.
Two, because it's more vertical, I think, wouldn't be as good of a fit. But we could, we could still maybe think about three, um, because it does have the right orientation.
Three's pretty dark.
It is pretty dark.
That's, that's the same with-
The fence draws your eye through the picture, so I would say one, we're gonna go with that.
I would agree.
Yeah, I agree.
But for the record, I disagree. I think that utilizing our community more, and especially the Rockford School District, would be a better way to create some artwork for the mural.
I, I, I agree that that is nice. Um, I, I understand the other points, too. I would say if we do go this route, which I'm okay with, but I'd want to make sure we put it down somewhere that when we go back to it, we go to Rockford first for it, so that we get them involved at some point down the road, and if other types of similar opportunities open up. Because I know, I, I, I don't know the teacher that you know, but I know their superintendent, and he's all about those type of partnerships, and, and they've been trying to, uh, be more involved in Corcoran, so.
Well- So, so with direction, if I understand this correctly, to help Dwight out here, uh, we will pull this picture. We'll see what, what we can do with it as, as we try to look at the aspect ratios that are necessary to put on something that size. Uh, we will add, uh, appropriate language to call out that this is the City of Corcoran. So figure out where that would go, whether that's a top or bottom. And at the twenty-eight council meeting, we'll bring those forward in order to, to go forward.
How much staff time do you think we'll spend on this?
I think that could probably be done like fifteen, twenty minutes.
Less than an hour.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto, um, nine A, which is new business. We have, uh, two items in nine A, the tuition reimbursement discussion, and then an added item nine B, um, regarding police department, uh, sidearm issue that came up. So we'll start with nine A. Um, and Jay, did you want to kind of kick us off?
Uh, yes, I'm just bringing this up, Mayor and Council. So, uh, fir- first of all, I want to commend the city is, uh, we have done a good job of investing in our staff, uh, to help them develop, uh, to become their best selves. We, we have, I think, when I talked with Matt, to his recollection, at least five employees. Uh, there is probably more, but five- Uh, there is probably more, but five employees that, that when he and I talked about it, that have been able to take advantage of tuition reimbursement. Uh, that have allowed them to either pursue undergraduate degrees or advanced degrees, master's degrees. Uh, and at least three of them are still employees. So it's also a helpful retention strategy when people feel like, you know, the organization is investing in them and it's helping them progress their career, there's, that's helpful to us. So we get the advantage not only of their increased uh knowledge, understanding, skill, but then also we get to continue to get the benefit of that. That's not always the case, sometimes you see people bounce after they've gotten an advanced degree to another organization, so I think the fact that three out of five are still here is significant. Uh, so there were really four questions that we asked council to consider. Um, uh, admin put together some uh feedback on comparable cities with reimbursement, and just so for the benefit of the public, I wanted to throw that up quick. Uh, so, uh, we looked at Rogers, Dayton, Medina, um, Minatrista, and Orno, and Wayzetta, and Maple Grove. And uh what we discovered is that first of all, again, thank you, uh, council has been very generous in supporting uh our staff. So uh, uh, above and beyond the, the Minnesota Office of Management and Budget, the status is non-taxable reimbursement at five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And we have historically exceeded that, none of the other comparable cities have, have uh provided that much. Similarly, uh comparable cities have historically not uh provided um tuition reimbursement for part-time employees. And uh, we have had two employees that started out as part-time, that have been able to take advantage of that, that are now full-time employees here. And so that has been a helpful uh strategy, uh, again, for retention and, and developing their competence. Uh, so the questions that we had asked council to consider were uh these four, does the city want part-time employees to remain eligible for tuition reimbursement? In my discussions with you, uh, there was a lot of question about if we should, and some of those questions uh were tied to equity. Uh, so we currently don't have a large volume of part-time employees, in contrast, when I was in Shakopee, I had two hundred and fifty employees and uh more than two hundred of them were part-time employees, so you have a large pool of potential future candidates. Uh, most of our part-time employees are seasonal at this point. Uh, and so that's a variable in the equation, uh, if the part-time employees are seasonal, does that change your consideration of part-time employees? When we have them here for a hundred and twenty days versus a part-time employee who's here twenty days, or twenty hours a week? Currently, our part-time employees that are, are twenty hours a week are all retired and, and working another, except in the police department. So our part-time employees in the police department uh are working for other agencies, and they may have this as a benefit as full-time employees with other agencies. Few exceptions, but that's generally so. So, part-time employees eligible or not, uh, I did hear some of you say yes, but I would raise that, do we want to provide that to seasonal employees who are here for a hundred and twenty days? Uh, and then tied with that is the last question, if we do, what's, what's the timeline that they should have? Uh, and so some of the cities had as much as five years. Uh, other than our snowplow drivers and lawn mowers, who are also retirees, uh, we haven't had a part-time employee here for five years. Uh, so, so some of our part-time employees, except for those that transitioned into full-time positions. Uh, and they were not part-time employees for five years at that time. Uh, so they, if, if it were that type of threshold, they would not have been eligible when we provided that. Um, so that's the first question that I wanted to open up for discussion, is uh guidance on part-time employees eligibility for tuition reimbursement.
Thoughts? My initial thought would be the, the seasonal would be pretty unusual to extend that to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, seems like part-time in general is, is not common, but to seasonal would be very usual, so I would, I'd be supportive of, of not offering that to seasonal.
So that category then would probably be permanent part-time employees? As a, like someone who is, in, in order to have longevity of years, they would be.
Yeah, I'm not even sure I'm saying that yet.
Okay.
I'm just saying eliminating that part, I'd be open to hearing what council thinks about part-time in general.
I was going to suggest allow it for part-time as long as they've been with us for three years. I hadn't really distinguished between seasonal and non-seasonal. If somebody has, you know, come back and driven a plow for three years, that to me shows some level of commitment, commitment to the city, that might merit some level of reimbursement. Sounds like we don't have anybody in the camp that would use it at this time.
Yeah, I don't know that it'll be used a lot at all right now, but we could have a policy. But is the rest of council think of a year for non-seasonal part-time?
I think it should be full-time.
Just full-time?
Mm-hmm. It's the benefit of working full-time.
I think I'm gonna agree with Michelle.
Okay.
There is an emerging trend in the law enforcement industry for community service officers and cadets blending, that agencies are considering tuition, so I don't know if there's a consideration for that distinction or not, or if that's a separate conversation, but it's definitely a trend in the uh, in the law enforcement field, that that's, they're hiring folks as CSOs or cadets while they're even just graduating high school and giving their, having them as part-time employees and getting assistance through there, so if you just wanna make sure.
That isn't a, a field of work that I feel like we're, or society is trying to throw everything they can at it to try to help with numbers.
I think there's grants available too, for students that are looking for tuition assistance in, in those types of roles, that transition into full-time eventually.
We actually just finished a grant on that, the IC Politt grant.
Yeah, we just submitted for that, it's off, they didn't fund it again this year, so they're using remaining funding, so I think in that grant application, we are competing for eight grant positions in the state of Minnesota. So they, there were quite a few more, um, and then there's also some federal grants that are pathways to policing, which is separate from the IC Politt. Um, and there's legislation right now contemplating changes or additions to the pathways grants, but we don't know where that'll land yet.
To, to address Matt's concern, would it be uh acceptable to council if there was a concern in, that it was only full-time? That as we come forward with a potential cadet program or other strategies to try and bridge this, that we consider tuition reimbursement within the language of those particular programs?
Yeah, I would, I would support that.
I'd support that, okay.
I'd like to talk more about it.
Yeah. Okay, um, so that would be.
Full-time only is what I understood, is the, is the direction.
Yeah, with, then coming up with some sort of other policy later.
So, so full-time only, so that answers question one and question four. Uh, and then the second question uh is about the dollar amount. Uh, should the city set a maximum dollar amount? So, uh, the policy previously was tied to tuition related to the University of Minnesota. Uh, and um, we did have a situation in which uh an employee wasn't aware of the tax implications of receiving reimbursement above and beyond the non-taxable income policy with MMBA, Minnesota Management and Budget. Uh, and so, um, one recommendation would be at the very least, uh, we set the threshold at the Minnesota Management and Budget non-taxable income threshold, which is currently five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, but rather they, they update that annually. And so rather than tying it to a dollar figure, tie it to the non-taxable income or non-taxable tuition reimbursement as established by Minnesota Management and Budget.
So does that maybe change it from the time?
So then if it does change, then we don't have to come back and change the policy.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Is there a federal equivalent that we should maybe key it toward instead? Is the Minnesota one just applicable to state income tax?
No, it is tied to federal as well.
Okay, so those will always be the same?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
So that makes sense.
What about, what about considering like, I mean, because you might have a person that wants to do their MBA and another person that wants to do a BA. What about if you did just fifty percent of, if, 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 I don't know what the amount would be, but the city would pay fifty percent and then the individual that's obtaining the degree would also have some skin in the game and be submitting fifty percent for that tuition?
So, so my caution with that is, uh, I currently, we've talked about this before, I've applied to doctoral programs. And the doctoral program at Vanderbilt is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, the doctoral program at Saint Mary's in Minnesota is forty-eight thousand dollars. So if we established a policy of fifty-fifty, there'd be a very inequitable benefit to employees, depending on where they chose to go to school.
And I do think.
That's why I think they established the threshold tied to University of Minnesota, uh, to try and establish some standard.
Yeah.
Uh, but as we looked at comparable cities, it was actually spelled out as a dollar value with all those cities, and many of them was as low as five hundred dollars.
Well, I think it's something to consider because it's taxpayer dollars that we're using to fund someone's education, and if it can benefit the city, that's why I think it should be full-time employees. And maybe we do do a limit then.
Yeah, I, I would support the limit that Jay mentioned with the, um, I forget the.
Minnesota Management and Budget.
Uh, is there a requirement to maintain passing grades? I would hate to spend taxpayer money for.
Many cities do, I don't know if ours.
I think it's C for ours.
Yeah, hers says C or better or.
Hers is C or better.
Pass fail.
So, okay, as a data point, my company pro-rates the reimbursement depending on the grade. So to get a hundred percent, you have to get an A, to get eighty percent, you have to get a B.
Okay.
And it scales down from there, so it's trying to ensure that people are working hard at their studies and, and not just barely learning to get the paper at the end.
Right. And I still struggle because it's public dollars, should we even be funding that?
So one of the challenges with some discussions, and I, I've had this with some of you, is uh equitable access. So coming here with an undergraduate degree and me advancing towards a, a potentially a master's degree, uh, that, that helps me advance in terms of my earning potential in a way different way than if I'm in certain roles in the city in which uh I don't really have, if I'm a police officer and I'm working twelve-hour shifts and I have a family at home, it's a different kind of challenge for me because of the role that I have in the city to have access to education. Uh, so that, that's one of the challenges in terms of equitable. One of the ways that I chat, I tackled that in Shakopee was, was we provided the same professional dollar amount for each employee and that either could have been applied to tuition assistance, or you can use those dollars for your other professional development, whether that's conferences, certifications, those sorts of things. So that, that's a way, but it was because I had so many employees.
Could staff use their, their um, their allotted amount for wellness towards education?
At this point, there's no prohibition.
Okay.
We haven't had anyone do that yet. We've had saunas and electric bikes and Disney World trips, but no tuition assistance. And, and I do wanna say thank you, that has had a really positive effect on morale. Uh, I, I think that was a, a really helpful response to the concerns that were expressed during the cultural assessment.
But the wellness dollars aren't taxable.
Yes, that is a difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are taxable.
It would appear based on the comps that you did, it's a typical benefit that's offered at all of the cities at some level.
Some level of funding, yeah, just about, or, or literally, yeah.
Two thousand.
And a lot of the ones that have the lower numbers have it where you can go back, uh, like you did a course for ten grand, you can go back the next year apply for another two thousand, another two thousand the year after that, whereas I think what we're talking about more would be one time.
Within that year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe a little bit higher of a number than the two thousands or whatever that are in there that allow you to go back year after year.
It's an interesting retention approach, to pro-rate when you get the reimbursement.
Say it again?
So if, if, to the mayor's example, if they took a course that they have to stay with the city for three years to get fully reimbursed because of the limit that's imposed.
I know Jay, you had a concern with that.
Yeah, I, I think administering it, we have so many things that we're trying to track.
That would be tough.
Uh, that, that becomes a heavy thing, like, that's a lot of attention for two thousand dollars benefit.
One thing I would add is, I think we have a twenty or a twelve-month clawback, if someone leaves, have to pay. I would be in favor of upping that to two years, so it kinda gets some of that.
Twenty months seems kind of arbitrary, yeah.
Is it twenty months right now?
Is that what you said?
I don't know.
It's currently twelve, twelve, okay.
Twelve, one year.
Twenty would be arbitrary, but twenty-four in two years, I think is a little bit better and, and I think is still reasonable.
Yeah, assuming somebody is going for a higher level degree, gets some benefit from that degree, from the work they'll do in those two years.
Mm-hmm.
So what I'm hearing from council right now is full-time employees only uh threshold to be established by the Minnesota Management and Budget? Is, is that, is there any more discussion about the, the dollar value?
What is that, what amount is that?
It's currently five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, that could change year after year, they publish it in January of each year.
I don't think it's changed much.
It hasn't.
I always remember that being very, very close to five thousand.
So could we split the difference with, with the employee of that amount versus paying the whole amount?
So you're saying establish it at twenty-five hundred dollars, half of what?
Yes.
I think you'll see less people take advantage of it at that level. I, I prefer increasing the retention period, so that they get it more fully funded, probably not entirely fully, depending on what they're doing.
I know the last couple at least have been buy-in by the person as well, it hasn't, wasn't fully covered.
Yeah.
The, the city didn't pay for my master's degree, but my master's degree was sixty thousand dollars, so five thousand six hundred and fifty, while that, or I'm sorry, five thousand two hundred and fifty, while that would have been very helpful if I'd been employed by the city at that point, um, a year, considering it was a two-year program, um, that would have been maybe one fourth, I'm sorry, not even one-fourth of the cost of it.
Right.
And master's degrees are the degrees that you're not gonna get a lot of scholarships for.
No, and I totally get that, I'm just trying to balance that with the idea of that being paid for with public funds, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, absolutely, I'm just trying to provide a pre-reference of how much the classes are.
Totally get that, I know, they're, they're incredibly expensive, yeah.
So the, the benefit of two years, u- usually master's degrees, first of all, no one's gonna be able to go full-time. So, uh, full-time master's programs typically twenty-four months, if someone is only taking a few classes, 'cause that's what you're gonna have a reasonable amount of time to do if you're a full-time employee, it could take five to eight years to finish your master's degree. Some would have caps on how long it could take, and so this might, if every year we're extending it by two years as a retention strategy, it could develop for each other skills and keep an employee here for ten years, if they're finishing a five-year program.
If they're doing it one classes.
Yeah, if it's one or two classes at a time.
So the city would pay for ten thousand dollars over two years in that type of program?
So, so they would pay, they would be submitting five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a year, probably each year, it wouldn't just be ten thousand, so. Uh, so over the course of five years, the city might pay twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, but when you're looking at what's happening to try and replace an employee. So back to Natalie's point, trying to get somebody who has a master's degree, who also has the knowledge and experience of the city.
Yes.
And they're applying that new knowledge, uh, there's a synergistic benefit.
But they are getting paid an hourly wage for that though.
They are, yeah, I'm not discounting that.
They're, they're paid for their work, but not for their school, like they're, they're not drawing overtime when they're taking that.
Yes, yes, yes. Correct, yes, yes, that's what I'm saying. So there's a benefit to the city because there's that experience, there's that knowledge, but there's also a benefit, so I'm trying to find the balance of what that looks like.
Because we operate.
So the city's not funding the full amount.
Because we operate so lean, and I actually just had this conversation with staff earlier today. Uh, we rely on collaborative, synergistic, multifunctional activity. And so, uh, if every time we lose, and thankfully, we haven't had an employee leave in a while, uh, because people like it here. And, and some of those people that we would have lost are still here because we invested in them. Uh, yeah, exhibit A.
He doesn't like being in exhibit A.
Uh, that, that, that would have been very marketable in a lot of other cities, and then, and then that skill has been applied in ways, I mean, it's, I, so, so um, a different way, if, if I had been in Shakopee with that staff, I would not have been in favor of this at all. Uh, be, because we had too many people, and the cost of it, I would have had so many people applying for it. We had in the last, Matt's been here ten years, and we've had five people that have applied for it. So we're not talking about every employee going to it, but it's positively impacted the lives of three employees who have stayed here because of it. When you look at the size of our staff, that's significant, and all three of those folks have stepped into more significant roles of responsibility as a result of that investment.
I think I, I don't disagree with you, I just, I look at the future and we're gonna be growing staff-wise. And so what we set in place now, once you set something in place, it's hard to retract that back.
We'll need to revisit that.
So I'm, I'm trying to find a balance.
We'll need to revisit it as, as we grow.
So, so we're talking about retracting it back, I mean, when, when you talk about that concept, that's exactly this conversation. That's exactly this conversation is, it's been this wide open, and we're talking about changing the aperture.
Just a little.
Just from part-time employees to full-time employees. That's a change in the aperture. We're talking about from unlimited, well, not unlimited, based on University of Minnesota threshold for tuition to the Minnesota management budget non-tuition. That's bringing down almost twenty-five hundred dollars or two thousand dollars. So, so this discussion is about recognizing the new circumstances and reconsidering our present policy. We can definitely do that as staff change.
I think where we are now, that, that number works for me personally and the other aspects we talked about. And then, I think we, one, as we grow as a city, if there's, you know, we're much larger, maybe that number changes. We have more people that are, that would actively be, be applying for it. We certainly want to take a look at it like we're doing now, but-
Is there a general consensus that E D M, Management and Budget Office?
I'm not sure I'm behind it yet, but, but that's, I'm one vote.
We're just discussing. We aren't voting, are we?
No, no, but we do need guidance.
Okay.
Yeah, direction.
I, I also think that increasing the timeline for retention before having to repay to two years.
I like that, yeah.
To twenty-four months?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That takes us to the last question then, uh, and this talks about the benefit that someone's getting. Third question is, should employees receiving tuition reimbursement also be eligible to participate in additional training opportunities? So as this question went out, I do want to point out that some training opportunities are mandatory. We need them to take, we, we have to invest in them either because it's part of their post requirement or, so there are some training opportunities that we need them to take annually. So I think, uh, the only clarifying on this question before we get your guidance is these are, uh, preferred or desirable training opportunities that are not required. So, for example, there's city clerk training that our clerk has to do. Uh, there, there are other training things that, there are CEUs, you know, for certain roles that have to be completed.
I think there was a good discussion a bit ago, could they use their wellness benefit for that instead? So maybe it's self-funded through that benefit if they're going to do something beyond the tuition program.
If they're participating in the tuition program.
If they are, yeah.
So, so that statement, I would take that, that, uh, employees receiving tuition reimbursement then would not be eligible to participate in non-required training.
But they could if they're not using, not doing tuition assistance, they could use it.
No, no, no. What I, what I was saying is, if you're in the tuition program, if you want to do an LMC conference, you're paying for that out of the wellness funds that you have.
So mix, mixing that becomes a little bit-
Okay.
We could present that to them as an option, but we, we can't just premise that right now.
What about, what about if you said, if you are participating in the tuition assistance program, you balance it out with whatever training you need that year? So that's what you would, you would, so like, if, if LMC is a thousand dollars, you get forty-two fifty for your tuition.
So reduce the tuition by any other training that you wish to do.
Based on what your current training is necessary.
So, so available tuition reimbursement would be, would, uh, based on that, then, like, right now, we do not budget five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per employee for a professional development. Uh, and candidly, we can't afford to. But we would have to if we were to apply that principle in order to be equitable to other employees. That, that is exactly how I did it in Shakopee, is we used a four thousand dollar amount for every employee. And then how you used it was, was dependent on you.
And if you didn't use it for tuition, then it goes back into the budget?
Uh, if you didn't use it for tuition, uh, then you're expected, I require folks to do some sort of training. But to your point, few people used all four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, so, some of the folks used a couple hundred dollars.
Um, and so, for instance, like, are police officers, that's a little bit different. There's this outside of the policy because they're part of that's dictated by the labor agreement, which has some other terms. But if they were to be similar, um, that could create some pinch points as far as officer development. So if we had somebody that was going back to school, getting their master's degree in public administration or, or a relevant field, if they were progressing and satisfactory in the police department, we'd still be wanting to send them to police-specific leadership like VCA leadership and Minnesota Chiefs. There's other leadership stuff that would be collateral developmentally and beneficial for the agency to, if they're, if they're, they're seen as a fit to meet our need for leadership, that would be considered not a minimum training, but we would want them to have that in order to make them, you know, there, there's an organizational interest in those duties. So whether, maybe there's some, should be some discretion as far as supervisors. If I say that this person, I think this person has a good chance to be one of our next sergeants, I'd like to try and flush that out and continue to develop them with law enforcement-specific leadership trainings that might be collateral or separate from their master's degree or whatever else they're working on. So I don't know if it should automatically limit depending on, because they're, they serve different purposes sometimes.
Well, to speak to that, I think a great way to handle that is that department has to determine what's required and what's not required. So if it's in the best interest of the department to, to develop this person with this training, you know, uh-
You balance it out.
You balance it out. Like, like, like I, I may need someone to go, uh, to E D M, uh, which is the Economic Development Conference. I may need someone to go to that, and the person that I need to go also happens to be on tuition reimbursement. It's in the best interest of the city still to send them.
Yeah, we might have two people enrolled in school and one of them's not being standard. So we would elect not to send them to some of the advanced stuff, but we would elect to send someone who is-
Yeah, so, so having, having discretion on what is determined as required.
I think it's like dependent on our budget, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we have to keep focused on is, is how does this affect our budget? And how much training and schooling and leadership conferences do we need to attend in a year? If we're focused on our tuition, and that's what we were trying to do to incorporate that into our current job, that's what our focus is going to be. And then maybe the following year, maybe there's one last class, and then you do go to whatever conference is necessary for that leadership skill.
I, I think that's a really helpful point. Uh, we can revisit this if it becomes a budgetary concern. So for twenty twenty-five, we don't have anyone using tuition reimbursement. In twenty twenty-six, right now, I'm aware of two employees that are interested in pursuing that. We're trying to build that into the budget. And so, uh, council has the, the prerogative to revisit our tuition policy if we see it as a problem with budgetary constraints.
Agreed.
I think we go with what we've kind of laid out, and then we'll have somewhat of a sense as we dive into budget in the next three, four months.
One last question. So we said two years. Um, what if the program takes four years to finish?
I think the reimbursement's at the end, so it'd be-
No, it'd be for each year. Each year you're incurring five thousand dollars.
Gotcha, okay.
You would have to pay back that five thousand dollars if you leave within two years of that tuition payment.
Right.
So it'll rise as the total number of years increases and fall as the years lapse.
Thanks. I think that's helpful.
All right, perfect. And then on to the last item that was added.
Ninety.
Ninety?
Yeah. Thank you. Um, Chief, I'm glad you're here tonight. I have a concern, uh, with, uh, an aspect of the police department that I think that there's some urgency in, in correcting. It's, um, our officers are issued firearm Sig Sauer P three twenties. Sig Sauer is a fantastic company, and I, I'm, I'm a big fan, except there have been, uh, I believe dozens of, uh, reported, um, inadvertent discharge or accidental discharges, and these are coming from multiple states, multiple departments. It's my understanding that the Air Force, uh, no longer permits its officers from carrying this weapon. Uh, I know for a fact that there are several police departments in Minnesota that prohibit their officers from carrying that specific make and model. Uh, I would like to make a motion to, uh, immediately authorize the funding of replacement of those weapons with a, uh, with a, a weapon at the door, you know, chosen by, uh, by the officers or, you know, I mean, by the, uh, by the chief. I don't think that this is something that, that can wait. Um, I see it as creating potential liability. Um, and, uh, I am, I am told that it'll take approximately twenty thousand dollars to fund this. So I would like to make a motion to immediately fund twenty-five thousand dollars to, to make this happen. And, uh, I would, I would urge the, the chief to, um, act on this as quickly as possible.
Quick question out of where would give us suggested-
What do you mean out of?
For, for funding it, for non-budgeted expense.
Well, I don't know, but we have to find that. I mean, you know, to, you know.
I, I don't disagree. Yeah, that's super important.
I get, I, I guess this is something where you got to find the money because if there's an accidental discharge, you know, we're all going to be sued because we all know about this flaw now. We all know that this is happening, and we better act on it.
Do you have anything?
Yeah. So I appreciate you bringing that up, um, and that's kind of on our radar. When they first, um, the, when news of uncommanded discharges coming, started coming out last year, um, it was something that we've been monitoring to try and find, um, try and find fact in. And I think, um, there's been a lot of new information over the last month or two that has, that has changed the landscape. There's about three to three and a half million P three twenties in circulation, and there is, you know, plus or minus one hundred uncommanded discharges that they, depending on which, which data source you look at over the past, you know, eight years or seven, eight years since that firearm came out now. Um, we have been doing our due diligence, and the plan was that next council meeting to bring forward a proposal. It was, and our, the due diligence we've been doing was not if we're going to do it, it was which one is the correct one. Um, we've been able to visit with those vendors. I think we have one more, last one next week. Um, and the plan was to bring the, the specific item for purchase. But if, you know, if you're, you know, if you'd like to authorize it, we certainly already have the plans in place. Already are doing the due diligence to achieve that. And, you know, I think the, the twenty-five thousand should be enough to do it. Obviously, we wouldn't spend more than we needed to, to, to get up to where we needed to be for it. But I appreciate your, your trust in our decision-making, and that would be very helpful because we were going to have this decision coming to you guys, um, next meeting, once we had the specifics. But we're just in the final stages of dialing that in, so thanks for bringing up the discussion.
Where would the money come from then? You've already got the money identified?
I believe that that would probably have to come from long-range planning. I think the, I know it was brought up potentially with the governor's state aid money, but that's, there were some restrictions on that, especially as it related to crowd control and weapons systems. I, I don't think that we want to wade into that.
I think, I think that's something we should keep an eye on in terms of hopefully recouping down the line, whether there's a lawsuit, like a class action, a bunch of police departments and the Air Force are understandably pissed off about this and private gun owners and all sorts of people. Should keep an eye on that, or if there's some sort of buyback from the company, um, certainly keep an eye on that as well as staying in touch with our legislators. And if, uh, future funding, public safety funding bills hopefully would not have that type of restriction because a bunch of departments are affected by something like this, so.
And I, I would also urge you, uh, I know that there is a, uh, a tendency to sell used firearms to other police departments. I would urge you not to do that and to, uh, maintain these, uh, weapons until, uh, until these lawsuits flush out. And, and again, perhaps, you know, perhaps we can look into some kind of reimbursement from Sig Sauer, but at the very least, uh, if, if these weapons are not good enough for our officers, we should not be selling them to other officers or to the public.
As far as funding, the only caveat that I'd say is, uh, as we look at, you know, when we get closer to year end, uh, I, I prefer to keep an eye on the police budget and if there is any flexibility to keep it in there and not touch. So we definitely can use long-range planning to do this if necessary. But, uh, what I would prefer to do is we'll, we'll code it to the police department, and then if we reach the end of the year and we find that there's insufficient funds, we'll transfer appropriately from wrong range.
How about if Mark wanted to make a motion here, we, uh, just leave it to staff to-
Figure out how to find it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Uh, can, yeah, can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Perfect. Go for it.
How many arms?
Sure. So we have, right now, our, our full staff capacity is about fourteen. We're hoping that we have, are able to add one or two officers next year, bring us to about sixteen deployed for full-time officers. Um, we keep three that are not deployed in case of a critical incident.
Yep.
That if those officers go back to the streets, they're, they need to be, uh, armed. So, uh, there may be one or two officers that elect to opt out of the department-issued gun if there's appropriate approval, but we also provide it for a part-timer if there's a need. So about nineteen would be my estimate. And then along with that would be, um, nineteen firearms around just a little over probably twelve thousand dollars, twelve and a half thousand.
Yep.
The holsters are about two hundred and ten to two hundred and thirty dollars a piece, so they're about four thousand dollars in holsters. Um, an extra magazine for each officer would put us at about another eight hundred dollars. Um, extra, sorry, I was making pouches. Extra, one extra magazine would be about four, five hundred bucks. And then the, uh-
Magazine pouch?
Yeah, the magazine pouch. And then also, we, we're going to need a couple of boxes of training ammo as their ch- transitioning platform. So probably going through a couple of boxes of training ammo and then another box for qualification with their new firearms. So, um, that along with the, uh, the extra couple that we'd be adding, we have, um, red dot optics on our firearms as well, so we'd be needing to purchase two or three of those. Our plan would be to, the ones that we have now, to try and transfer those over to the new weapons so we don't incur that new cost. Um, but there would be a couple of those that we'd purchase. So those, those estimates came in about, yeah, between twenty and twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Sounds good. We have a motion in a second. Any other?
All those in papers, yeah?
Aye.
Jim Adams?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
All righty, staff reports.
Uh, so Mayor and Council, there's been a couple questions. Uh, we got positive feedback on the trees that were removed from Heritage Park, and I've had some of you ask me who the vendor was. Uh, so I have that information. I'll email that to you so you can share it with residents if you would desire. Uh, so they did a good job for us, and, uh, we did talk with them. Uh, Steve spoke with them, and, and they look forward to hearing from potential other future customers. Uh, another thing, uh, that I received some, uh, questions about was where we're at on closeout with some of our, um, developments. And so rather than us go line by line with those, uh, I, I will email you a current status report on where we're at with closeouts and if you have further questions for staff. Um, but the one in particular was, uh, concerns about Ravinia and where we're at in the staff with, uh, the stats with Ravinia. If you recall, uh, we established, uh, some protocols for punch lists because there was concerns about not seeing that advance to the degree that we wanted. And, uh, we anticipate half of the additions, uh, to begin warranty by the end of this year. Uh, and then to remain, uh, the remaining will go into warranty in twenty twenty-six. Uh, so we have, uh, those, those that don't get, so we have Ravinia one through fifteen. So, uh, the, the last parts should be into warranty by sometime next year. I think that's the right number.
What, what remains until next year?
Those are details that I'd have to, I, I don't have those in front of me. I, I, I got, I got a status from Kevin, and he's not here tonight. So I just wanted to provide that update that the good news is, a lot of them are going, well, the majority of it is going to go into warranty here momentarily. Uh, but there are still some that will outlay. And also with that, there's escrow reconciliation that's required. Uh, and if you recall, one of the challenges that we were having with closeout was the reality that our escrow was not in a place to do closeout. And so the progress that we've made, we're in a good place to be able to, to do that. So the financial portion, we're, we're ready to do closeout. And then with some punch lists of, uh, quick update, Vassal Crossing South has been accepted. Vassal Crossing one and two has been accepted in a warranty. And then all through the rest of them, I'll send you an update on what those are.
I, I am concerned about twenty twenty-six. I'd like, I, I think about a year ago, we wanted them to be done by the end of twenty twenty-four, and we threatened to pull letters of credit to complete work at that time. So we didn't really see much progress. They responded to the threat, but we're still continuing to see slow progress from what I'm hearing if they're not going to finish all of the work until twenty twenty-six. So are we pushing them as hard as we should be?
My understanding is yes. Uh, so I, I do see the, the punch list progress, but it's, it's also complicated. One of the things that we were talking about, uh, Councilmember Nichols and I, is, for example, with the trails. So this, I think, is the third time in some cases that they've replaced sectioned trails because where we've put trails, uh, the, it's, it's a challenging thing. This stuff grows up through the trails because we live in a wetland area and some of our invasive species are very difficult to get rid of. And so, um, in some cases, we, we could, they could say that, um, their punch list would have been complete faster, and now it would be our problem. The reason it's still a problem is because we didn't complete the punch list so quick. The reason it's still a problem is because we didn't complete the punch list so quickly. So that would be a, a counter if, if I were them. Like, if, if we completed this in year one, I wouldn't have trees coming through this right now. So it's been the timeline to redo it, and part of the reason that we couldn't do it, because we weren't in a place with reconciled escrow to be able to close that out. So this isn't completely their fault, part of it is where stuff is, it's, it's gonna be our problem. It's not gonna go away as a problem just because, uh, they're, they're not doing something negligent, it's, it's a hard problem, uh, for example.
I would say we take a look at the email that comes out from Drancy, and see what specifics we have, if we should bring it.
Yeah, if waiting until twenty-twenty-six gets us a permanent fix to that problem, it's worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will, I would not expect that that's gonna completely solve that. Some of the things that we talked about, like that tree issue, um, it's not gonna go away. It might be, you and I talked about materials. So, for example, for your benefit, what we talked about is concrete makes sure it doesn't come through. Concrete isn't tenable at the scale that we're doing trails. It's, it's too expensive material, uh, but it, but trees don't go through, grow through the concrete.
Maybe if there's select areas that could have concrete, I don't know. Something we can look into in the future.
I'm sure it'll take some creativity, but we have a very creative group of people working with it.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, that's all I have.
Okay. Only thing I have is that Country Days is obviously this Friday and Saturday, hopefully it won't rain out. Family Day from ten to four at Lyons Park, I'm planning on being there as much as possible, hopefully.
I'll be there.
Dean, you'll be, hopefully you guys will, you'll be there.
I will be there with you, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good.
Bring your cowboy hats.
And my cowboy boots.
And.
And your raincoats.
Yeah, especially if you're going to the concert, 'cause it's gonna be muddy down there, forecast is the same, but, who knows? All righty, um, city council schedule's in there, I believe it was updated with some of the latest additions that are upcoming, um.
Mr. Mayor, I got a couple of things quick. Um, I'm getting inquiries on ditch mowing, is it that time of year, again, to mow ditches and such? If somebody could check in with Public Works, that would be great. We've had a lot of growth, and I think I, I think my, my ditches have been mowed twice this year, and, uh, some people are saying they haven't been mowed at all. I disagree with that, I think we've got a good staff, it's just people are wondering when more ditch mowing will happen. Nineteen Unite was fantastic, I think we all agree on that. The, the silt fence in Heritage Park, a concern with all of the work that's being done next to the creek in the northeast corner. Shouldn't there be a silt fence preventing that from running off? There's been more activity, it's more exposed dirt, the roots and the stumps are all gone now. Shouldn't there be a silt fence there, just standard construction stuff?
I would double check on that. Sometimes they wait till the crew's gone, but it shouldn't be, should be up by now, so I'll look at that for sure.
Yeah, it wasn't there. Um, city property native grasses, all of our city properties and such, what is the status of those? We've got farmers that are talking with me, telling me they would, uh, have plowed, mowed, um, done stuff, and not much has been done, other than the early spraying this year. So just if we could get an update on that. Cooklake Highlands, not necessarily then, but the J.B. Holmes Group, are those houses nearly complete? Those nineteen or twenty-one houses done? And I'm looking, and I'm more on the, all of the flags now for sale, there's four flags on property that's not theirs, should they still be up?
Probably not on property that's not theirs.
So flags are a gray area in our code, 'cause I don't believe what we can, so that's usually a workaround.
But it's not their property.
Yep, but flags, we don't regulate at this point, because what we say in code is not something I think we can enforce, 'cause it's not content neutral.
Okay.
Um, so that's kind of a workaround for developers, so as far as if it's a construction sign, then it does need to be on to entrance to the site, but that is, they aren't construction signs, so, um.
But if the homes are nearly, aren't we eighty-five percent no advertising?
That's, that's a requirement of the construction sign.
Okay.
So that's why we're, yeah.
Is it on a homeowner's property?
No, it's across the street from the storage facility.
I believe they have an agreement with Ebert for that, 'cause Ebert owns that land.
And then.
Oh, they have an agreement.
On the Cooklake Highlands, I think we've talked about this before, the silt fence all the way along Ebert's property, north side of New Horizons is still up, and there's still fence in all of the deep grass. Is there any way somebody can clean up the right-of-way across from Corcoran Lyons Park between the road and New Horizon and such?
I was told that fence is removed, and maybe it'd be helpful if you and I go out so I can see what you're talking about, 'cause I don't know if we're talking about the same thing with the developer then, so, um, maybe we should set that up.
Sounds good. Yeah, yeah, I just, the, the silt fence is still around the Ebert property where the flags are. Um, there's no development, no nothing, everything is done all the way along that road, and then cutting across to, um, Bass Lake Road. It's still up, bordering Ebert, protecting Eberts, whatever.
Well, so I think what we, 'cause I was told the silt fence was removed, but maybe it was on the wrong site, so that's why I just wanna go out, I think, with you, just, just get eyes on it. So I, I know for sure that I'm telling them the right thing.
Okay, and then that whole easement, I know I've talked to Beth about, is there any way that that can get mowed? It's, she says it's not hers, it's public right-of-way, and that's not her responsibility, that's the county's. But it looks awful. Coming into our city, you're looking at every conceivable weed and everything on that whole side hill berm, or if that's the way it's supposed to look.
We can take a look and see if there's a code enforcement thing that we can use, so we'll take a look at that.
Opportunity for gateway sign?
Yeah, somebody better put it in. Anyhow, thanks.
Well, with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All righty, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good job at the.